Good evening. Oh, I don't want to bang the gavel. Thank you. Good evening. The time is five thirty. Thirty. This is the regular board meeting of the Adelanto Elementary School District. It is Tuesday, November fifth, fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. So that's our call to order. Can we please have a roll call?
Trustee Eckes.
Present.
Trustee La French.
La French present.
Trustee Turner.
Turner present.
Trustee Webster.
Webster present.
Trustee Benz.
Benz present. All right, on to one point zero four, Pledge of Legions. Please stand and place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, going on to two, adoption of the agenda. Two point zero one, proposed additions, deletions, and adjustments in the order of business.
Madam President, we don't have any tonight?
All right, so going on to two point zero two, adoption of the agenda. I need a motion to approve.
Trustee Turner, I motion to approve.
And I need a second.
Trustee La French, I second.
Give that to La French. And please call for the vote.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, I.
Trustee La French. Trustee Eckes.
I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I. Motion passes five zero. Okay, here comes the fun part, three special recognitions. So, we are at three point zero zero one, ten and fifteen years of service, employee recognition.
Yes, thank you, President Benz, members of the board. Good evening, everyone that's here in person and everyone out in Zoom. First, let me say, it is exciting to see this boardroom full of our staff and their families. It is just a wonderful opportunity to be able to recognize all of you that have dedicated ten and fifteen years to this district. And I know there's others out there that have recently joined us, whether it's five months, five years, ten months, ten years. We truly appreciate all the hard work and dedication that our employees give to this district. So this evening, we are excited, and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Moran to recognize our employees that have ten years and fifteen years with the district this evening. So, Mr. Moran, I'm going to turn it over to you.
All right, good evening, everybody. Good evening, President Benz, trustees, interim superintendent, Mr. Kraus, cabinet members, staff, students, UCLA, and guests. I'm bragging because I was talking to them earlier, and my daughter graduated from UCLA. All right, so I'm Carlos Moran, the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, and it gives me great pleasure to be here to recognize staff of the Adelanto Elementary School District who have devoted their careers to enriching the lives of our beautiful children in our community. Not only have the staff, we are recognized tonight, enriched the lives of these children, but they have also supported our classified and certificated colleagues at the sites or in their respective departments. Again, it's an honor to present and recognize the many employees this evening. Prior to the start of tonight's board meeting, there was a reception. I know there was some cake that was provided by the CNS staff, so I'd like to thank them as well. I'd also personally like to thank my HR team in the back who helped plan this, as I take no credit at all other than reading this. So, thank you, Edie, Dana, and Alejandro in the back. Give them a round of applause. As well as Julie Nichols and her CNS staff for preparing the little box, the little cake. Thank you. So I appreciate everyone's teamwork and coordination. The annual service awards ceremony is part of a tradition of recognition and gratitude for our dedicated employees whose accomplishments and outstanding work contribute to the success of our students, teachers, staff, and alumni of the Adelanto Elementary School District. The annual service awards ceremony honors and recognizes our staff for different milestones, ten years, fifteen years, twenty years, twenty-five years, thirty years, and more. Tonight, we will recognize staff who've completed ten and fifteen years of service to the district. And I will begin with the employees who have reached their tenth year of service in the district. When I do read your name, can you please stand to be recognized and remain standing? If you are joining us via Zoom, please turn your camera on to be recognized. So I will need some help from our team here. Thank you. So ten years of service. Again, thank you for your service. So I have Shalonda Adams, Transportation, Michael Barrett from the IT Department, Zach Davis from Melva Davis, Custodian, Victoria DeWitt from CNS, Maria Hernandez from Gus Franklin, Teacher, Nora Juarez from Nutrition Services, Brenda Clemish from Mesa Linda, Paraprofessional. Judy Martinez, Children Nutrition Services, Amy McKay from Morgan Kincaid, Teacher, Guadalupe Munia from Braddock, Clerk Three, Kimberly Munoz, Campus Security from Columbia, Vanessa Padilla from Gus Franklin, Secretary, Tina Parma from Children Nutrition Services, Marcella Poole from Melva Davis, Teacher, Isabel Sandoval from Child Nutrition Services, Mario Santillan from Victoria McGathen, Custodian, Enriqueeta Solis from Transportation, Wanda Stuball from Children Nutrition Services, Luce Solins from Morgan Kincaid, Teacher, Gina Teague, Teacher from Morgan Kincaid, for being here, Chandra Thornton, our Assistant Administrator from Gus Franklin. And then I know, thank you for being here and thank you for still standing. We can't see them, but I'm hoping some of the other recipients are on our Zoom. So again, congratulations for reaching your ten years of service. We appreciate all of you. Let's give them another round of applause. So I don't know if the...
We need to take a group photo, so don't sit down. We got to come up here.
Okay, so we will, yeah. So go ahead and come on up for ten years. Okay, congratulations again for your ten years of service. Thank you. So now we will recognize employees who have served the district for fifteen years. So for the fifteen-year acknowledgement, again, each employee received, I forgot to mention that, received a pen and a certificate. All right, so again, when I call your name, please stand to be honored. And then those on Zoom, if I call your name for the fifteen-year service, please turn your camera on. So let me start with Maria Aguilar from Braddock, Paraprofessional, Sandra Alameo, Academic Services, Executive Assistant, Sylvia Anderson, Secretary from West Creek. Congratulations. Denise Aranda from TedVic, Custodian, Kim Avigliano, Paraprofessional, Melva Davis, Laura Benson from Gus Franklin, Teacher, Luann Bort from Gus Franklin, Teacher, Rebecca Bakowski, Assistant Administrator, TedVic, Regina Cole, Teacher from Gus Franklin, Sandra Coronado, Victoria McGathen, Paraprofessional, Tiffany Cosboom from Morgan Kincaid, Teacher, Laura Davila, Teacher from Gus Franklin, Sonia Davis, Library Media Coordinator, West Side Park, Raymond Dodd, Teacher from Columbia, Shante Duarte from El Mirage, Teacher, Julia Erickson, Teacher, Victoria McGathen, Angela Espino, Library Media Coordinator, Adelanto, Mariah Esquer from Gus Franklin, Teacher, Karen Evers from Centurion Roman, Deborah Fernandez, Teacher from our Hope Program, Erica Garcia from Maintenance and Operations, Secretary, Julie Graham, Library Media Coordinator, Melva Davis, Melody Gronewald, Teacher, TedVic, Martha Guzman, Transportation, Bus Driver, Monica Hammond, Children Nutrition Services, Lee Andrea Isaac, Teacher at George Vapa Academy, Michelle Joy from Children Nutrition Services, Jeffrey King from Maintenance Operations, Elizabeth Kuman, Teacher from George Vapa, Jose Lopez, Lead Custodian, Morgan Kincaid, Chris Martinson, Teacher, Columbia, Marcia McCray, Paraprofessional from Melva Davis, Rebecca Medina, Special Agent Clerk, Kelly Mahaffey, Custodian from Melva Davis, Gregory Murdock, Teacher from Melva Davis, Alma Becky Nicio, Secretary from Mesa Linda, Sylvia Ortiz, Teacher from George Vapa School, Jose Otero, Custodian from Eagle Ranch, my executive assistant, Edie Peralta, Sarah Reader, Teacher from George, Cynthia Rodriguez, Paraprofessional from Gus Franklin, May Alice Salas, Paraprofessional, Eagle Ranch, Cynthia Sepeh from Melva Davis, Teacher, Erin Sheridan, Teacher from Gus Franklin, Eddie C., Teacher from George, and Solange Vital, Clerk Three, from Victoria McGathen. Thank you for being here. Another round of applause for the fifteen-year anniversary recipients. All right, please come forward for a picture. Again, congratulations to all of our award recipients for your ten-year and fifteen-year service to the Adelanto Elementary School District, and thank you for allowing me to present tonight. I'll give it back to President Benz. Thank you.
All right, that was a lot of names, but I think we're so honored and proud. Trustees, do you have any comments you'd like to share?
Just congratulations and thank you for being a part of our family. You guys are awesome. I know many, many of you, and thank you for sticking it out all these years and just doing what you do. We wouldn't be who we are without you. So thank you, thank you for what you do, and thank you for being here tonight. Thank you.
And any other trustee?
I concur with my fellow trustee Eckes just said. Looking at the longevity in our district, thirty, twenty-five, twenty, fifteen, ten, and I'm really proud to say that we have a committed and dedicated staff. And congratulations to all of you. I would like to see you another ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, thirty years. So again, thank you for all you do every day for our students and your fellow staff members. Thank you. And congratulations again. Oh, one other thing. I was talking to Superintendent Kraus, and Board, I want to share with you. I think that we need to revise what we give to our employees on serving so long in our district. So, Board, I will be bringing a Board agenda item so we can change this recognition. You deserve more than what you've been given. Over the years, we didn't have the money to do it, but we do have some extra funds left over, so we're going to try to make some changes to what you get for your longevity with the district. And I just wanted to throw that out there. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to take a moment and tell each individual, thank you for your service and your dedication to AASD. I also want to thank the support that I see sitting around all of these individuals. It shows that we have such a strong family over here. You know, you come out, you support the individuals you see every single day. We have friendships that have built such an amazing foundation. And I really look forward to seeing each and every one of your faces so many more times. And I am going to take just one minute to say thank you so much to my middle school receptionist, Sylvia. I don't know where she went off to, but thank you, beautiful. You, to this day, make differences. So thank you, and I appreciate everybody coming out tonight.
I just want to say thank you for your service here at AASD. And it seems like sometimes as a teacher for myself, you start off and you say to yourself that it's first year, second year, third year, then five years, then ten years, and you look up, it's twenty years, twenty-five years. And you know that the time just flies by because you enjoy doing something that is dear to your heart. I want to just thank you for all that you do for our children here.
And and I do concur with the Board. I was saying to someone, it's like your kids, right? They first, it's brand new, start off, and then next thing you know, they got the keys and they're out the door with the car. And where does the time go? But I think when you do enjoy your job, when you work with the kids, though they may try you, sometimes working with kids, it takes a special heart, I believe. It takes a passion and a service to the community. And you are all shining examples of that. And I do, from the bottom of my heart, I think, thank you very much. All right, so now we're going on to three point zero zero two, student presentation from West Creek Elementary School. You're up.
Yes, good evening, Madam President, and members of the Board, members of the community. This evening, we'd like to welcome up Principal Bowers, and she will be helping to present some students who look like they have some interesting posters to share this evening. So we're excited, students, to watch your presentation. So Principal Bowers, take it away.
Okay, and before I forget, is Ricardo in the audience anywhere? Because I did not see Ricardo come in. All right, so we'll go ahead and get started. So Board members, trustees, cabinet members, I want to introduce our college-bound students at West Creek. Every year, our third-grade teachers do a project where the kids have to research a college that they would like to attend. They create a presentation, and then they make these tie-dye t-shirts to wear for the rest of the year, every Thursday, to represent the college that they someday want to attend. So we'll start with Ms. Lennon's class. They're here representing UCLA. And we have Raquel, Kylie, and Sebastian, who are going to tell you a little bit about UCLA. Thank you, Ms. Lennon's class. And you can see they're beaming teachers back there. Okay, all right, next we have Ms. Phipps' class, and we have Graciety Nath and Elisha representing Cal Poly Pomona.
Hi, my name is Graciety Nath. And name of the college, Cal Poly Pomona, where is the college? Eight, three, eight, zero, one, W, Temple Avenue, Pomona, C, A, nine, one, seven, six, eight, called, school colors, gold, green. The mascot, Billy Franco. I want to learn how to play the piano and the flute. That's why I love the college.
We also have Elisha.
Hi, my name is Elisha, and I want to go there because I want to be a farmer in Cal Poly because it's interesting, and these are all the fruits. At Cal Poly, you could be a farmer and sell them to your parents, your brothers and sisters or something. Also, it's two colors, and here we have Cal Poly Carlos. It's this one and this one.
And Graciety Nath, we had one student who did not make it, but Graciety Nath would like to share with you what he researched and found out.
And they're Calog Calog Hattie Horse Farm, and sold it to Cal Poly Pomona.
Yeah, for those who don't know, Calog donated his horse ranch to Cal Poly Pomona so they could build the university there. All right, thank you. And it wouldn't be a complete presentation if we didn't recognize the two teachers who made this possible, Mrs. Phipps and Mrs. Lennon. Alright, trustees, do, do we have an, any com-comments?
I do. I want to say that it's such. A wonderful idea to be able in the third grade to discuss where college that you're going to go to. I wish someone. Would have asked me that when I was in the third grade. I may have taken a different turn at some point in my life and didn't have to make a U-turn and come back. That is a wonderful thing, especially to be able to. Do a research for someone in the third grade to find out what the college is about, what the mascot is. Wanted to be a farmer, just different things in the third grade and then you strive for that and you continue year after year to say, that's what I'm going to do. And you keep an eye, your eye on that prize for you. That is wonderful. And congratulations to every one of you. I hope to be able to see you one day at those schools, but I know because you have the shirts on. That reminds you every time you put it on, the assignments that you've made, you have wonderful teachers and you will soar and you will go there. Thank you.
Thank you. Trust, trustee Eck, Eckus?
Well, first of all, you guys are amazing. I don't even think I knew what college was in third grade. So you've come a long way and you've got a wonderful, great teachers. And a principal that's gonna lead you to get there and that's amazing that you have so much love and support at your school. And we all encourage you to follow your dream and if going to that college is your dream or any college. Please pursue it, always look into it and see if it's something you really want to do and just go for it. So congratulations, your presentation was beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you. Trust, trustee Webster?
Um, I want to start off by saying thank you to these two individual teachers who have. Bestilled this idea in these students' heads. Just like my fellow trustees, somebody should have said this sooner, right? Because I think I would have been great in college. But um, I want to tell these students, always follow your dreams, follow those colleges. And you will soar far, like farther than you can imagine. The fact that you are here educate-educated about it today tells me that we are opening this future up to. Something magical. So thank you and stay on these paths. And parents, thank you for supporting them, being here, showing them how important it is. So have a great night and if, um, all else, drive safe.
Trust, trustee Turner?
I would like to say congratulations to each and every one of you. I know it was hard standing in front of us, you know, giving your presentation, third grade. I remember when I was in the third grade, that was a lot of years ago, maybe like 60 years ago. And so to hear you excited about going to college, not just college, but the college of your choice, you've done your research and that's amazing. There are some high school students that haven't. Done any of this and to see that you're doing it, your teachers are encouraging you to do it, your family is here encouraging you to do it. And guess what? You could do it. You can do it. It may seem like a long ways away. But it really isn't. We have an employee that uh, is sitting in the audience, he works in our business department. And guess what? He, he went through the Adelanto Elementary School District and he went to college and guess what? He came back to work for us after he left college. He's sitting over there with his mom and. When he came, he brought a picture, this is Zach Clement. And he, he followed his dream and he is working the job that he loved. His mother just was awarded a 10-year uh, recognition for working in the district. And it can happen to you, you, you follow your dreams, don't ever let anyone think. That you can't do it because guess what? You can. You could be president of the United States. You could be anything that you want to be and remember that. And parents, thank you. To see you taking pictures of them at this age, just think in the next couple of years where they're gonna be, time go by so fast. So again, congratulations, I'm looking forward to seeing you thrive and you're gonna do it. And one day you may come back to Adelanto and say, I want a job and we'll give you one. Okay?
Well, I concur with trustee La La French. I just wish some, somebody had said that I could go to col-college. Went, when I was in hi-high school. So I had to wait till I was an adult, then I came back. Uh, first thing, I'm so proud that you stood here in front of adults and spoke because that's a hard thing to do. You know, a lot of kids, they get scared, adults get scared. So you. So I know just for you being, being here, sharing what, what you, you've learned. You are gonna achieve things because fear won't, won't stop, stop you. So I am so honored, so proud. Parents, thank you so much for bring-bringing them here. I, we really do love when the kids come and share. And share with all and guess what? You guys are gonna be on you YouTube. So there you go. Alright, thank, thank you. Okay, so now we go on to four closed sess-session de-declarations. We, we will be ta-taking i-items four point zero two through four point zero zero six into closed sess-session. Uh, I go-going on to five. Pub-public test-testimony, uh, five point zero zero two. Do, do we have a rep-representative from A, A D T T T A to speak on clo-close sess-session?
I do not have at this time, Madam President.
Okay, how, how about C-C S E A?
Not at this time for closed session, Madam President.
Okay, do we have odd-audience mem-members?
Yes, Madam President, we do. We do have uh, Ms. Christie Philippe that we'd like to uh, welcome to the podium for closed session item. That's correct, Ms. Philippe?
Okay.
Administrator, I feel that I have proven that I am up to the task. And it go well over and beyond uh, the duties that are expected of me in the classroom as well as in. Uh, the administrative position. So I'm hoping that you will pay attention to what I'm saying and just note. That I do believe that there was negligence on this, in this particular instance. And I know uh, my fellow administrator that we had uh, an argument with each other. And we've known each other a long time and we are friends, but like everybody at times when you're low staff. You don't have all the people in place. We have 14 to 17 subs sometimes at Columbia Middle School. And by the end of the day, you're pretty frustrated and worn out. By the end of the day, Friday, you're extremely frustrated and worn out. And I believe that led to this incident happening and I do believe myself and my co-administrator, Ms. Yates. Do not deserve to be put in this position. So I hope you will listen to us and think about our reputation. And what this is going to do to our reputation. And also know what we bring to the table, because both of us are very good administrators. We've been administrators for this district over eight years. I've helped run the special ed department. I've been at two different sites where I've had very good relationships with staff and students. And I believe that I am a good administrator and this one incident should not determine my fate for the rest of my life. So please take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. And I think that's.
That is all, Madam President, for closed session.
Okay, um, I, I need a, a mo-motion to move to closed sess-session?
Trustee, President Benz, before we go, I saw a student walk in. Ms. Bowers, did your student come? No? Oh, okay, I just wanted to check.
Okay, okay, so um, I, I need a mo-motion to re-recess to closed sess-session?
La French, I motion.
And, okay, I guess, uh, call for the vote, please?
Trustee, excuse me, trustee Webster?
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner?
Trustee Turner, I.
Trustee La French?
La French, I.
Trustee Eckus?
I.
And trustee Benz?
Benz, I.
Trustees, if I could have you vote on your.
Voting, thank you. Hey, the, the time is now six, oh, mo-motion pass-pass passes by zero, zero and the time, time is now six eleven. Eleven, thank, thank you.
Thank you.
Is La French here? Yes, she's here. That, I didn't see, see her, the mask was hiding her. Where's mine? Did you, I think I left my agenda. Yeah. It got, oh yeah, I gotta read that. Let me have yours, thank you. I think it got mixed up. It got mixed up in paperwork, so, okay, here we go, um. Got that, uh, let's have a call to or-order, um, let's please have roll-roll call and quorum is estab-establishment seven, seven point zero zero two.
Madam President, the time is eight thirty-eight PM. And I'll go ahead and take roll call, trustee.
Is La French here? Yes, she's here. That, I didn't see, see her. The mask was hiding her. Where's my? Did you? I think I left my agenda. Yeah. It got, oh, yeah, I gotta read that. Let me have yours. Thank you. I think it got mixed up. It got mixed up in paperwork, so. Okay, here we go. Um. Got that, that, uh, let, let's have a call to or- order. Um, let's please have roll, roll call and quorum is estab- establishment seven, seven point zero, zero two.
Madam President, the time is eight thirty-eight PM. And I'll go ahead and take roll call. Trustee Echus?
Present.
Trustees, please go ahead and vote as well. Trustee La French?
La French, present.
Trustee Turner's?
Turner, present.
Trustee Webster?
Webster is here.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, pre- present. Quor- quorum has been estab- established. Uh, there were no, um. Close sess- session reports, no action to report. Like, no, no, no. We vote for that and open. Uh, okay, now go, going on to nine pub- public test- testimony. Moni, um, Mr. Kraus, can you please read?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Members of the board, this evening, the public comment period is administered by state law. And is the point in the meeting set aside for members of the public to share their opinions with the board. Open meeting laws do not permit the board to engage in dialogue or answer questions. Protocols for speakers. Any person who wishes to address the governing board on open session agenda items only must complete and submit an AESD speaker request form five minutes before the meeting is called to order. If the comment is about something that is not on the agenda, it will be heard only during the public comment on non-agendized items, period. Once that part of the meeting is over, comments will only be taken on agenda items during the discussion of those items. The board values public comments, and although we cannot take action or discuss items not on the agenda, we listen carefully and appreciate input from the public. Additionally, a public speaker can be cut off for exceeding the allotted time or for willfully causing an actual disruption to the meeting. Before cutting a person off or removing someone, the board will give at least one clear warning. If you were cut off or warned last time, please consider that your warning. Individual speakers are allowed three minutes to address the board on each open session agenda item. The board limits the total time for public input on each item to twenty minutes. With board consent, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public presentation, depending on the topic and the number of persons wishing to be heard. The president may take a poll of speakers for or against a particular issue and may ask that the additional person speak only if they have something new to add. Thank you, Madam President.
All right, thank, thank you. Um, do, do we have a rep- represent tentative from ADTA?
I believe we do online, Mr. Sinatra. If you could look for, uh, Mr. Han, I know he was going to be joining us for ADTA this evening.
I do not see Mr. Han, but I see Ms. Raider.
Ms. Raider, are you, uh, going to be speaking on behalf of ADTA this evening?
Um, I'm not prepared to. Um, Mr. Han is having connectivity issues. If you'd, um, uh, re, uh, return to him in a few minutes.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, okay, so go, go, going on to C, CSEA?
Yes, ma'am, we have Ms. Diane Lynn, who's joining us via Zoom. Mr. Sinatra, if you could ask her to unmute. We welcome Ms. Lynn.
You may unmute now.
Oh, I can't turn my camera on. Oh, there I am. Sorry about that. Some happy technical issues as well. Well, um, good evening, President Benz, trustees, Mr. Kraus, cabinet, classified staff, certificate staff, and all others attending this meeting. First of all, I want to congratulate all of our ten year and fifteen employees. What a that was fantastic that you're recognizing us again. Um, I would like to give a shout out to our wonderful classified staffs. We always seem to pull through when things around us are failing. Our IT department has been understaffed for many years. I must say, now that all the necessary items came in, our boardroom and Zooming is running fantastic due to our IT staff. I have a little comparison that I wanted to share with all of you. And it's regarding staffing for IT. Um, Apple Valley, they have one manager for IT, a director, eleven technicians, four data techs, one network tech, and one low voltage tech. And they have thirteen school sites. AESD, we have one network systems analyst, one database analyst, four techs, and one instructional technology liaison. I was able to review the proposal that Michael Suma had worked on regarding the transformation of our IT department. I do believe we would benefit by having a director for IT. I know it was, um, not approved when it was presented last full year. However, times have changed. Who knew, ten years ago, all of our staff and students would be utilizing today's technology every single day? Who knew that we would have a shortage nationwide for applicants? I think we need to make adjustments for these changing times. Since our new applicants for IT can't pass our tests or do not meet the two-year requirements, why don't we have junior IT personnel? I attended the job fair for classified, and one of our techs brought his son to apply. Unfortunately, he did not meet the two-year requirement. Going back to a director, I'm sure you heard about LA Unified School District being compromised. What are we waiting for? Our students, parents, staff, administrators, cabinet, and trustees' information could be compromised. We should be proactive and not wait for ASED to be compromised by a professional hacker. I would also, on another note, I would like to, uh, commend our personnel department. I know they are doing the best job ever, but I do feel our personnel department is also understaffed. We have job fairs, but not enough staff to process applicants any timely matter. In some cases, it takes three months from the time an applicant submits their application to their start date. Why? Understaffed. Also, I would like to say thank you to the bus drivers who always pick up the extra routes when we are short-staffed. We hear you on the radios. We need to get our students to and from school. Hopefully, we can gain new drivers so we can be fully staffed. Going forward, let's become proactive. And again, as I have mentioned before, communication is the key. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight.
Thank you. Thanks, thank you. Okay, now go, going on to nine point zero, zero, zero three, odd, audience mem- members. Oh, um, is, is Miss, 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 Mr. Han back yet? Has he been a, a, able to?
I still did not see them.
Okay, so we'll, we'll go, go to, to the, the audience and then come, come back and hope. Hopefully, he, he can co- come back. Okay.
Thank you, Madam President. We'd like to welcome Ms. Claudia Perez to the podium this evening. Please, uh, come on up to the podium. Thank you, Ms. Perez.
Do you have the, uh, time, timer? Okay.
Uh, we're here because our daughter hasn't even had, uh, three months going to the school, Ms. Linda, junior high. She's only been there for a month and a half. A month and a half with her new classes. Anything else? The school principal has been said that my daughter is in danger. Um, she's, is in danger for the school and other kids and to herself. My daughter's never been, uh, she's never been suspended for aggressively hitting anybody. Um, or physically hurting anyone whatsoever, herself either, uh, yes, thinking. And most, and all her suspensions that she's been having is, uh, verbal suspensions only. Not, nothing violent, nothing, um, that they can say that she's in danger, I don't know, whatsoever. Their, she, the school principal is trying to move our daughter to a different program called HOPE. Or they're trying to give her homeschool studies. Or because they didn't have, because they didn't have simply those, um, those programs that they give out for special needs kids. And there's, there's no discipline room. And there is no counseling for special kids or only for normal kids. Think more. Uh, this morning at seven forty-five, I went to the school. And my daughter wasn't in the system any longer. So I asked the assistant that was right there, uh, Rodriguez? Over, over a letter that they had sent me on Saturday. And she was translating it for me. And the, and the principal came out. The principal came on and said, what, what, what was I doing there? What was my business doing, uh, me being there? Uh, I have no longer any business, um, being there at all whatsoever, so what was I doing there? So I asked her to give me a letter saying, stating that my daughter was no longer in the school district, I mean, in the school property. But I have my right as a, as a parent to ask for that letter, and she refused to give it to me. And she said, she said, no, because we were, she, we received this paper. I don't know if you guys want to take a look at it. Assistant, no? It's, it's this one. We're supposedly, she's already out of the system. When we didn't even agree to, to any of this.
Okay, uh, they're still being helped through the thing, so, thank, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, Madam President, we'd like to call Ms. Teresa Berias up to the podium. Welcome to the podium, Ms. Berias.
Hello, good evening. Um, so first I wanted to address that there are a couple Transportation Department resignations on the agenda tonight. And that's really concerning to see that we have a bit of a Transportation Department exodus. And based on the comments from the last meeting, it's alarmingly, it sounds alarmingly like a hostile work environment situation that could open the district up to bigger issues. And it increases our dependency on outside contractors too, instead of the dedicated staff who care about our kids. So, um, it's, you know, really concerning to hear that so many team members have issues with management and are leaving because of it. Um, I also wanted to address the, um, the mobile communication devices policy since, um, you know, I, I think I share the concerns voiced by, um, some of the board members last time. Um, of, you know, what does constitute reasonable suspicion for search and seizure of devices? Um, and how do we address social media and device literacy as well? I think that's a really big issue for our kids, um, especially considering that so many kids are engaging in cyberbullying using their devices. Um, I know that this idea is more of an individual classroom solution. But as a parent, um, I don't feel uncomfortable with the idea of kids turning in their phones at the beginning of class in each classroom into like a shoe rack. You know, the ones that you like hang over a door and like having a check-in, check-out system with their phones, um, with something like that. So I just wanted to throw that one out there. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Madam President, our next speaker, we'd like to call to the podium is, uh, Ms. Diane, uh, Deborah Fernandez and Ms. Roma Flores. If they're in, uh, the room, we'd like to welcome them to the podium.
Ms. Flores is on Zoom, but I'm just gonna speak first. She had to head home. Um, good evening. Um, thank you, President Benz, Board of Trustees and Cabinet, tonight for this opportunity to speak. Um, my name is Deborah Fernandez. I am the HOPE scholar, one of the HOPE scholar, uh, teachers, former of Ava Bridges. Um, first of all, I'm really excited to hear that, um, you met with, uh, that, um, you met with, uh, Erin Gruel. I, um, uh, always followed her. Um, so it was really exciting to have our district, like, start working with her. Um, for those of you that don't know, in two thousand nineteen, I became the first Freedom Rider teacher in the Adalanta School District. Um, to go through the institute and become a Freedom Rider teacher, um, through the institute. And as of last year, uh, uh, actually the summer, uh, Ms. Flores did also. Um, so we've been able to attend the institute with Erin. Um, so, uh, in two thousand nineteen, after I attended the institute, uh, slowly after that, we had the pandemic. And during the pandemic, um, I just want to share that, um, we were able to work with Erin, uh, one-on-one during the pandemic. Um, during that time, uh, when we first closed, our students still needed computers. But everybody else was going to pack it, and no one had a process of kind of what was gonna to happen. And so Erin actually worked together and got eight MacBooks sent to our kids that I got to go and deliver to our kids. So she really helped, kind of helped get our kids through the pandemic. Um, turning into that, uh, we, she was able to do Christmas donations. So the Hotel Maya, who works with the institute, was able to donate and to, um, uh, we had five thousand dollars donated, uh, gifts donated to our kids. Um, during that, where we get to, we got to drive around and drop off, get, um, Christmas presents. Then it turned into lessons, uh, so, uh, as a cat, when you become part of the Freedom Rider Institute, you become part of their, the Freedom Rider cabinet family, uh, Freedom Rider teacher family. And so during that time, um, we, we started talking about, like, curriculum and taking the stories from the, from the Freedom Rider book. And how can you apply, like, hope and, and happiness and different things to it? And started working on curriculum. And during that time, um, Erin approached and asked if we were willing to, um, have our Ava kids meet with, meet with Erin. So during the pandemic, we actually got to work with the Freedom Riders three days a week during, um, during Zoom for two hours, two hours a day, three days a week during the pandemic. Um, working with our kids on a lot of social emotional learning. So when other people were struggling, our kids were showing up to things, um, and, and being there. So, um, so it really helped get our kids and, like, us mentally through the pandemic. During that time, also, our kids, uh, were working on writing and writing about their feelings and things that were going on, like, the Freedom Riders had done. And so, um, two of our students during that time, we spent, um, a year and a half past the pandemic also, or past the pandemic time, uh, writing, uh, writing for the new book that you guys have in front of you. It's called Dear Freedom Rider. So, um, stories nine and twenty-four are, sorry. Okay, um, so really quick, so stories nine and twenty-four are from our two students directly. So when you're doing things and you're working, it, it's really important. I wanted you guys to, to read those stories because those are not, we were not reading about people that don't belong in our district. Like, these are true stories from our kids. So I just am excited that all of you guys had a copy, and I wanted to see that. Um, we're so hope, you know, hoping that you guys will be able to bring the Freedom Riders to the district. We've watched what they've done in Moreno Valley. It literally saved our kids' lives. Um, we've had kids in foster care. We've had so much stuff with those kids and, like, I think the Freedom Riders are the ones who really kind of kept us and the program that we were doing. Um, and thank you for the time that we got to work with Columbia also, because even in those six weeks, it really made a difference. I still have kids, like, reaching out to me, so I just wanted to say thank you for this opportunity. Thank you for HOPE. I can't tell you how much it means to have a program back and, um, you know, the district's going in a, in a way that's gonna make a difference for these kids. And I'm hoping that you guys will consider working with the Freedom Riders as well, because I can promise you, I've, I've watched it change our kids' lives. And I've watched what it's turned in Moreno Valley and other places, and I'm, I'm very honored to be a part of it. Thank you.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Miss, 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 Mr. Han is in the Zoom now?
Mr. Han's here, asking him to unmute now.
Hi, Mr. Han.
Good evening.
There you are.
Okay. Hopefully, that's better. Okay, good evening, uh, Madam President.
Hopefully that's better. Okay, good evening, uh, Madam President, distinguished board members, Superintendent Kraus, Dr. Doisan, Mr. Moran, esteemed colleagues, and our community stakeholders. My name is Brian Han and I am proudly serving our members as the Vice President of the Teachers Association. On behalf of our executive board members, I would like to congratulate and thank all of our dedicated teachers and classified staff who have served the Adelanto School District community for ten or fifteen years. We appreciate your dedication and commitment to serve the children of the Adelanto School District. We also would like to, ah, we also would like to thank Christine Benz for her years of service to the district and welcome our new board members. Risa Baris, Brihas, um, and we're welcoming back Stephanie, uh, as well as, um, Ms. Love French. So, uh, once again, congratulations and we look forward to working with you um, throughout the next, uh, four years. Moving on to, to another area that has been of concern, uh, to our members. And, uh, excuse me just a minute. On page one thirty-eight of the Un-Audited Actuals, you will find, uh, you will find, uh, everything, um, related to the sixty percent. That was called the CEA. And what has been disappointing for us is that, while we did not meet the sixty percent threshold and most other districts did not meet it as well, the other neighboring districts did come closer uh, to meeting it, uh, for salaries and benefits for teachers and aides. Um, to just give you a quick recap, ours, ours was fifty-four point thirty-one percent, which is well short of the sixty percent threshold. Victor Elementary School District was sixty-one point ninety-one, while Victor, Victor High School District uh, was at fifty-three point forty-five percent. But as a high school district, they only need to be at fifty percent. Hisparia Unified School District was at fifty-seven point thirty-four percent. But as a unified school district, they only needed to be at fifty-five percent. So of the four districts in the high desert, um, that have their information listed publicly, we are the only ones that didn't come very close to meeting the threshold. And we just wanted to bring that to your attention, just, uh, as we, uh, as we move forward in the year and, uh, continue our negotiations. Other than that, um, things have been going well and, uh, we do have, we do have, uh, some issues that, uh, um, are can, are of concern. But those are actually being handled by Mr. Kraus and Mr. Moran, and we appreciate, uh, their assistance with these matters. In closing, once again, uh, board members, we thank you for your dedication and service to our community and we appreciate all you do. Thank you so very much and have a great evening.
Thank you.
Okay, thank, thank you. Go, going on to, uh, ten cabinet, cabinet re- reports.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I'm actually gonna step to the podium for just a moment and I appreciate the board's patience. Uh, good evening, members of the board. I am, uh, members of our community. And first off, I just want to say thank you very much to our uh, ten and fifteen-year employees that joined us this evening and whether you're on Zoom or in person, we do value all of the hard work that you put in and dedication to our district, but not only the ten and fifteen-year employees, but all of our employees that are, are with us and will continue to be with us and those that have retired, I want to thank you for your service. Uh, this evening, I just had to read a creative writing assignment from one of our students at Morgan Kincaid. Uh, we strive for academic excellence in this district and we will, uh, continue to do that. But this is a story, just to give you a quick background, students at Morgan Kincaid were given an assignment. Imagine you are a turkey and Thanksgiving is fast approaching. Write a letter to a farmer explaining why you think they should skip turkey for dinner this year. Be persuasive. So we talk about our EL and our writing and our standards, and this is an assignment that's along those lines in language arts. And so here's her story. I don't know what grade she's in, but her first name is Malia. And, uh, I am just, I was just amazed by what she wrote. So hopefully you'll, uh, be amazed as well. Dear farmer, the reason why I think we should skip out on turkey is because people do not know how to cook. So basically, last year, we went to my auntie's house and myself, my sister and mom. Now that turkey was dry. It was disgusting. I put so much hot sauce on it and it was still dry. She's being serious here now. This student is writing this essay, being persuasive to the farmer about why they should not allow turkeys to be eaten this year. But it gets it even more interesting. That turkey did not deserve that because it was nasty. So dear farmers, please don't kill these turkeys unless it's for my mom, as she is putting all the seasoning and it is finger licking good on her turkey. Now today, I saw on TikTok, I don't know the truth of this or not. I saw this girl on TikTok. She only put salt and pepper and her husband left her. That's what she said. Her husband left her. I think that was because she doesn't know how to cook. But if you don't know how to cook, leave these turkeys alone. I'm grateful for my family and friends, and this is the end of my essay. So I just wanted to read that because our students are so creative and given the opportunity to flourish, if you give them an assignment and they run with it. And, and just, this is one of many. Malia is one of many of the great students that we have in our district. And I want to thank all of the dedication of our teachers and our classified staff who work diligently in our classrooms from day in and day out, in our front offices, from our maintenance workers to all of our workers behind the scenes. Because all the support that Malia and all of our students get is because of them and because of the support of our board. I want to thank our board for all of the support as we bring items before the board from cabinet, uh, for your consideration and approval to assist our students and our staff to be a success. And we know that as we move forward, uh, we will continue to do our best to educate our students and make them the best they can be. And Malia, I, if I can track her down, I'm gonna give her a turkey for Thanksgiving because she deserves it and hopefully her mom makes it finger licking good. So thank you. That concludes my comments this evening. I'm now gonna turn it over to Dr. Dwyson to talk about academic service.
As long as you're not the one cooking it, we're good.
Oh, man, I gotta go after that. All right, I'm late. All right, good, um, good evening, Board President Benz, Board of Trustees, Cabinet and our AESD community. So I'm excited to share some important events taking place in academic services. So I'm proud to announce on, uh, December one through third at CSBA, um, our very own Rebecca Bun, she's a coordinator in Student Services, um, will be part of a panel at presenting at CSBA on promoting well-being in our school communities. So we're very proud of her. Our History, Social Science, Textbook Adoption Committee will kick off this Thursday, um, with our Savis Publishers being the first. And the team will be piloting those materials until January. We again want to thank the board for their time and their commitment, um, in holding a special board workshop to hear from our publishers and most of all, our process over the next several months, because we all want to make sure that we select the best materials for our students. Our District Advisory Council meeting will be taking place this Thursday, the seventeenth. That's at Eagle Ranch Elementary. Um, and that starts at five thirty to seven. With this being a new committee, we, uh, will be establishing our bylaws and nominating officers at this, um, committee meeting. Um, so we also want to share district highlights and have the opportunity for questions and feedback, just as we do at all of our committee meetings. Um, January, it's a little farther away, but we want to start planting the seeds now. That January twenty-third through twenty-seventh is Kindness Week. So you will be seeing many activities, um, to support our culture and climate at our school sites um, in building a positive and safe welcoming environment, uh, for our students to learn. So our team, the last several weeks, many of our teams have been attending various workshops, webinars, um, conferences the last few weeks. And this allows our, uh, Academic Services team to be stronger, current in effective practices and build effective networks and practice, practices for the betterment of our students. So we want to thank the board for their, um, support for us to learn and grow and bring those back to our district. We're excited to announce that, um, AESD will be receiving two block grants. Um, that will be coming out. So we have the Art and Music Block Grant, which is a little over four million. And then our Learning Recovery Block Grant at just over fourteen million to help fund our learning recovery ed efforts. So we will be submitting, writing those plans, um, with collective stakeholders and bringing that to the board. Um, as we have not received those funds yet, just notified that we will be receiving them. Um, November twenty-eighth through ninth, we're gonna be having a food and toy drive. This is in collaboration with our after-school programs. Um, and then with a food distribution on the sixteenth of December. So anyone wishing to donate canned food items can donate to any school's front office. And so with that, um, that concludes our updates for academic services. Thank you, Dr. Dwyson.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, President Benz, Trustees, Mr. Kraus, District colleagues and community members. Thank you again for the opportunity to, uh, share some HR items. Um, I'd like to start off first on negotiations. I'd like to thank our ADTA partners. Uh, we've completed two, uh, negotiation sessions, uh, with our partners, October eighteenth and November first. Our next scheduled, uh, negotiations meeting takes place December sixth. Uh, with CSEA, I'd like to also share that we've completed two sessions with them on October twenty-eighth and November ninth. We do have a, a third one set up for December. Um, and the district will continue to meet and work collaboratively with our union partners to reach a fair agreement that supports all of our employees and student achievement. Uh, from our Risk, uh, Management and Benefits Department, um, had the privilege to go to the High Desert Retreat. Uh, the retreat, uh, at the Retreat, the High Desert Trust, uh, which helps with our, uh, medical benefits and those costs. Um, uh, the trust voted and agreed to go out to, uh, complete RFPs for medical coverage. Kaiser and Aetna also presented at our annual update, uh, annual meeting. Uh, and they shared information regarding costs, usage and programs. In addition, um, there was a California JPA inaugural conference. Um, this was the first joint conference, uh, that was held in Anaheim, uh, last, last, uh, week. Um, there were multiple topics that were covered, including benefits, leadership, risk management and mental health. I'd like to thank some of our staff members who attended, uh, the retreat and the JPA conference. Um, CNS Secretary Jeanette Willer, representing CSEA, attended. Uh, from Morgan Kincaid, teacher Brian Han also attended. Uh, Melanie Olsen-Savala from our HR department, uh, also attended with me. So we had an opportunity to also learn more about each other. Um, uh, as you know, we also have two employees from our HR department, Alejandra and Dana, who are attending the Personnel Academy, uh, through AXA. Uh, I wanted to give them, uh, an update of where they're at. So they've most, uh, most recently, they've covered some legal framework for employee and employer relations, evaluations, due process for classified personnel and personnel, uh, investigations and resolutions. So, um, the board approved this several months back and I think it was, uh, uh, well worth it because they're getting more, um, information on how to, uh, handle different HR, um, items. So thank you again for, for that opportunity for these two employees. Um, in regards to, uh, certificating, on the certificated side, uh, we've conducted, um, ADTA liaison meetings on October twenty-seventh to further strengthen the partnership between ADTA and the district. Uh, we've also conducted a human resources onboarding for a new administrator. We've conducted evaluation roundtable discussions regarding evaluations. We've also, uh, attended position control workshops with the Business Services Department. Uh, we continue to work interdepart, inter-departmentally to further the mechanisms that ensures internal control and fiscal responsibility. From the classified side, um, we've attended, uh, leave of absence training. That was through the Shaw HR Consulting Team. Uh, we are continuously posting for open positions to fill our classified vacancies. The HR department is also working closely with school sites to coordinate the transfer and promotion of current contracted employees. And we are very glad to see our employees growing and advancing professionally within the district. And then, uh, from the mental health support, um, from our, our benefit side, um, the district continues to offer, uh, the Employee Assistance Program, which is also known as the EAP for full-time employees and no charge. Employees and hu- household members can confidentially address and resolve personal and workplace challenges utilizing the services that are provided. The district also provides care salas for staff, students and community members twenty-four, uh, hours a day, seven days a week. For more information, please feel free to contact Melanie Olsen-Savala from our HR department. And finally, um, and thank you, uh, to Mr. Kraus sharing the cute story about, uh, Thanksgiving. I'd like to remind everybody that Thanksgiving break is next week. Our schools are closed next week. Our district office will be closed on Thursday, November twenty-fourth and Friday, uh, November twenty-fifth. I'd like to wish all of our students, families, employees a wonderful and restful Thanksgiving break. Enjoy your time, but more importantly, enjoy your time with your family. Thank you for listening.
Hey, thank, thank you. All right, uh, going on to, do, uh, do we have questions, comments? I'm sorry.
Should we motion to extend? We're at nine fourteen right now. We have fifteen minutes.
Oh, yeah. Thank you for telling me. Uh, yeah, we're, we're go, go, going to have to take a vote. So I need a mo- motion to extend.
Webster motions to extend to eleven PM.
We don't have to stay that late, but I'm giving us time.
Up to, so let, let's, let's try to not. So we've got that mo- motion from Web- Webster. Can I get a sec, second? Okay, thank you. Well, I, I was about, about to, so. If no, 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 no one else did, I was go, go, going to. Second, okay, we need a vote to extend the me, me, meeting up to eleven, eleven PM. Doesn't mean we're gonna do, do it, just.
Stay. I'm just giving us a buck.
Yeah. Trustee Webster?
Aye.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, aye.
Trustee La French?
La French, no.
Trustee Eckes?
No.
Trustee Benz? Benz, aye. Mo- motion pa- passes three, two. We'll try to get this out and bounce. So let's kick, let's get, get this show on the road. Um, move, moving on to eleven, eleven, eleven point zero, zero one, govern, governing board mem- members, reports and announce, announcements. Uh, why don't we keep them short, trustees? I mean, I'm just saying it's a suggest, question. Uh, can we start with trustee La, La French?
I'll try to be kind with my words and I sometimes have to keep saying that, you know, I'll wait till the next time in order to say face with the timing. But I just want to say that I wish everyone from A ESD a happy and safe um, fall break. Enjoy your families. Love on your loved ones. And, um, thank you for being here with us so late.
Thank you. Trustee Eck, Eckes?
Okay, um, I agree with Ms. French. I hope everybody has a great holiday. Um, I have to put this out there because if I don't, I'll forget. Um, I was not at the last board meeting because I went to an amazing conference. It was called, um, Shifting Para- Paradigms in Music Education. And something just told me I need to go to this. Um, I really want to see music brought to our schools, to our children, to our school district. And I know we have Georgia the Performing Arts, but at this conference, I learned how important music is to all children, all grades, all levels, every classroom. It was amazing. It, the science and the, the, the data out there just proves that children are much more engaged, much more intelligent, more ready to learn, more alert, they're better in math, they're better in reading, they're better, better in socializing, they're better with emotional and, you know, dysfunctional problems. It's a way for them to escape, it's a way for them to learn, it's a way for them to interact and bring them out of their shells. I heard from amazing people at this conference how they even worked with special ed children who were severely special ed and they still were able to work with them and get them to learn music and teach them and the smiles and just the joy. So while I was at this conference and just real quickly, it was a pretty good conference, very in depth. From eight o'clock in the morning till six o'clock at night, there was classes all day long on all kinds of subjects of teaching from every end of the angle. It was amazing. There was never a dull moment. And then from eight o'clock in the morning to ten o'clock at night in the rotunda room of the conference center, all you heard was children from, I want to say high school, all the way down to kindergarten. They had all kinds of kids with music, singing, choir, instrumental. I heard jazz. I heard all kinds of music and this went on all day long from morning to night. There was never a dull moment. If you didn't want to be in a class, you went to go listen to the music. And I mean, it was just magical to see how these kids learned music and to be able to perform in front of audiences that were huge. So I wish I could have brought all that back with me to show the board, but just the experience was absolutely amazing. Anyway, I won't take too much longer, but right the day I was leaving, I got a text from our superintendent saying we got that four million dollar music grant. And right there, I just knew that was a sign from God that I was in the right place, learning the right stuff. And, you know, not that I'm going to come back to the district and rearrange everything, but I actually have some knowledge now and some input. And I would like to ask Ms. Dosan if I could be part, part of that. When you go and you do that with the parents in the community, I have so much information that I have in me now to bring back where I really believe we need to have music in our schools. There's a way to do it. They, they've done it and it's just amazing to see how these kids have just flourished through music. So anyway, I could talk all night about it because I'm still excited about it. But it was an amazing conference. I'm so glad I went. And I, I just want to encourage the board. If you find any music conferences out there, it is so worth it because it really makes the child whole to have music in their life, in their education. So anyway, I'm just tickled pink over that and I just had to say something. Other than that, I'm sorry, I won't take too much more time, but I am not feeling well tonight. So if I leave before eleven, it may happen. Other than that, I just want to wish everybody the best this holiday season and just be safe out there. Please be safe out there. Other than that, I'll, I'll just pass it on to the next board member. Thank you. I will keep my comment short for the first time tonight. I'm very proud of me. I do want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. I hope everybody's ready for this break because I know I am. And for those who are still with us, please drive safe tonight as it is cold. So I'll pass it along to Ms. Turner.
Again, I'll keep my comments short. I concur with my fellow board members. I wish everyone happy Thanksgiving and time with your families and don't eat too much food because that's our, we call it our annual dinner day for my family. And I took a picture of that story. I have to share it with my family and I will share this at our Thanksgiving table so they can hear it. I don't, I don't cook a dry turkey, so the farmer can definitely sell me a turkey. I would just like to briefly comment on the Freedom Writers book that we received. And I want to just give a shout out, Ms. Fernandez Left and Ms. Flores for, you know, their hard work and dedication, you know, in our Hope program, my new name, Hope program. And I just would like to say, we started, it was formerly called the Opportunity Program. And it was an avenue for our children to be a part of that, you know, needed some extra attention. Instead of sending them home or sending them out of the district, we created that program for them, you know, for, for their, for them to be successful academically, to apply the discipline that they so desperately needed. And then to give them encouragement, to let them know that you are loved and you're supported and we're going to do everything that we can to make you successful in life. So I'm really happy that we started that program back. I remember when the movie, the Freedom Writers movie came out. I really wanted Erin Gruel to come to our district, but it was, we just couldn't afford it with the different budget cuts at that time. And I really agree. I agree. I hope that the board approved to add Freedom Writers to our Hope program because I think it will just send that program to a whole different level for our children. And they so desperately need that program. And I will read the stories in this book. Ms., Mrs. Flores and Mrs. Fernandez, thank you for everything you do, your passion for our children. Because I know you come across some horrific stories about our children. And I'm just so happy that we're able to provide those services for our children. So, and I know that Mr. Kraus, we're able to go to that workshop last week and bring these books back to us. So I will definitely want to read it and read the stories of two of our students that are featured in this book. So hopefully, and I pray that, you know, their life change, you know, for the better. And so with that being said, real quickly, I did visit Mesa Linda Middle School yesterday and also Morgan Kincaid. And I would just like to thank, you know, our student teachers. I was able to sit in on a, on a evaluation from a professor and that was in Mrs. Raiders' class. And I was really, really impressed with what we saw. I would love to see more student teachers in our district and think that we need to make a permanent fixture in our universities to, to recruit these teachers, you know, because they're so desperately needed. So I'll keep that, and I'll say I was going to keep it short. So I'm, I'm done. Thank you. Thank you again. And again, have a happy vacation. You deserve it. Thank you.
Okay, so I just want to say hap, happy thing, thing, Thanksgiving to ev, everyone. Please have a red, restful, calm, joyful break. On a per, personal note, this will be the fir, first year my son isn't with me because he has signed up for the Army. And I just kind of want, wanted to share how proud I am of him. So Mr. Moran, he's gonna have to resign. But I'm so proud of him and he leaves on the twenty first. So I'm just, yeah, right before Thanksgiving. But a thing that, that I've done is I always cook, even if I'm the only one there. So just in case the kids, they always have a place to, to go. So I, I am proud of my son. So that's all I've got to say. So let, let's go, go on because we're on a time sched, schedule. Okay, go, going on to staff reports and presentation, tations. Twelve point zero, zero one, ac, academic ser, services. Okay, are we going to table this? We will ta, table this until the next me, meeting.
Have a motion to table.
We need a mo, motion?
I second. Webster, seconds.
Okay, so we have a mo, motion from trustee Turner. We have a sec, second from Web, Webster. Can we please call for the vote? Trustee Webster?
I appreciate you, Tasha.
Yes, I know. Trustee Turner?
Turner, aye.
Triscilla French?
La French, aye.
Trustee Eckes?
Aye.
And trustee Benz? Benz, aye. Motion, mo, motion pa, passes five, zero. Move, move, moving on to thirteen, thirteen point zero, zero one, adopt, option of the min, minutes, board min, minutes, approve as writ, written and ord, order filled, reg, regular board me, meeting of October twenty fifth, twenty twenty-two and spec, special board gov, governance work, workshop me, meeting of November first, twenty twenty-two. Can I get a mo, motion to approve?
Webster, motion.
And can I get a sec, second?
Turner, second.
And call for the vote? Trustee Webster?
Aye.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, aye.
Trustee La French?
La French, aye.
Trustee Eckes?
No, because I wasn't here for that meeting.
Trustee Benz? Benz, aye. Mo, mo, motion pass, passes four, zero. Okay, go, going on to four, fourteen, con, consent agen, agenda. We are ta, taking i, items for fourteen point zero, zero two through four, fourteen point four, forty. Does an, any trustee want to pull an item?
No.
Okay, hearing, where am I? There's so many things on here. I gotta flip the page twice. Okay, so I need a mo, mo, motion to approve i, items for, for fourteen point zero, zero two through four, fourteen point four, zero.
Eckes, my motion.
Okay, I got a mo, motion from Eck, Eckes. Can I get a sec, second?
I second, La French.
La French, okay. Call, calling for the vote? Trustee Webster?
Aye.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, aye.
Triscilla French?
La French, aye.
Trustee Eckes?
Aye.
Trustee Benz? Benz, aye. Mo, motion pa, passes five, zero, zero, zero. We had no i, items re, removed from the con, consent agen, agenda. Move, moving on to new, new, new biz, business, six, sixteen point zero one, biz, business ser, services, den, deny, nile of claim by a, Applied Memetics L L C. I need a mo, motion to approve?
Trustee Turner, I motion to approve.
And I need a sec, second?
Webster, I second.
Do we need discuss, discussion? Nope. Call, calling for the vote? Trustee Webster?
Aye.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, aye.
Trustee La French?
La French, aye.
Trustee Eckes?
Aye.
Trustee Benz? Benz, aye. Motion passes five, zero, zero, zero. Okay, go, going on to six, sixteen point zero, zero two, business services approval of lockdown training for fourteen school sites and the dis, district of, office by know, knowledge saves last. I, I, I need a mo, motion to approve?
Motion, I trustee Turner, motion to approve.
Okay, I need a second. Okay, we're open for discuss, discussion. Mr. Kraus would like to say some, something really quick.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I am very excited to bring this item to us because I know the board and our administration and all of our staff really take the safety of all of our staff and students seriously. And so Knowledge Saved Lives has been working with many school districts across the state to offer lockdown training. And as the board is well aware in our community, we've recently been experiencing a few lockdowns at some of our schools. And we want to provide real life training to our staff. And I appreciate the collaboration between C S C A and A D T A and our management teams to be able to bring this to our districts and to our school, to our district and to our schools in the next few months. And so again, it's just something that is so important to train our staff on, on a regular basis, not just one time, but on a continuous basis. So we hope that this will be very beneficial to our staff and again, give another level of safety for all of our staff and students at our site. So again, I appreciate the consideration of the board on this item this evening.
Okay, trustees, do we have ques, questions or dis, discussion?
I would just like to say thank you, Mr. Kraus, for bringing this, for the board to consider. This is very important and, and very needed, especially during these tough times. So thank you for, especially for it to be a continuous training so we won't lose sight of what's happening.
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, call, call for, for, for the vote, please? Trustee Webster?
Aye.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, aye.
Trustee La French?
La French, aye.
Trustee Eckes?
Aye.
Trustee Benz? Benz, aye. Mo, mo, motion pa, passes five, zero. Okay, go, going on to paul, policy introductions, updates and read, readings. Seven, seventeen point zero one, ac, academic ser, services, adopt and approve the fir, first read of B, B P one, three, one, two point three and A R one, three, one, two point three, uni, uniform complaint procedures. I, I need a mo, motion to approve?
Turner, I motion to approve first reading.
And I need a se, second?
Eckes?
Okay. And discussion? Call for the vote? Trustee Webster?
No, Webster, aye.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, aye.
Triscilla French?
La French, aye.
Trustee Eckes?
Aye.
Trustee Benz? Benz, aye. Mo, mo, motion passes five, zero. Okay, going on to seven, seventeen point zero two, academic ser, services, adopt and approve the sec, second read of B, B P zero, four, one, zero, non discrimina, negation. I need a mo, motion to approve?
Eckes?
And I need a sec, second?
Yeah, Turner, I approve the second reading.
Okay. Discuss, discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote? Trustee Webster?
Webster, aye.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, aye.
Trustee La French?
La French, aye.
Trustee Eckes?
Aye.
Trustee Benz? Benz, aye. Motion passes five, zero. Okay, go, going on to seven, seventeen point zero three, academic services, adopt and approve the se, second read of A R five, one, one, three, ab, absences and excuses revision. I need a mo, motion? To table?
Trustee Turner, I motion to table this board policy, second reading.
Webster, I second table.
Call for the vote? Trustee Webster?
Aye.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, aye.
Triscilla French?
La French, aye.
Trustee Eckes?
Aye.
Trustee Benz? Benz, aye. Mo, motion is ta, to you both? Five, zero. Okay, go, going on to seven, seventeen point zero four, academic ser, services, adopt and approve the sec, sec, second read of B P five, one, four, one point two, one, admin, ministering med, med, medication and mon, monitoring health condi, conditions, A R five, one, four, one point two, one, admin, ministering med, medication and mon, monitoring health.
Trustee Turner, I motion to table this policy.
We got a mo, motion to ta, table by Turner. I need a sec, second?
Eckes?
Eckes? Call for the vote? Trustee Webster?
Aye.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, I.
Trustee La French?
La French, I.
Trustee Eckes?
I.
Trustee Benz? Benz, I. Mo- motion pa- passes five-zero, mount to ta- table. In case I wasn't clear. Okay, go, going on to seven, seventeen point zero-five, ac- academic ser- services, adopt and approve the second read of BP five-one-three-one-point-eight mo- mobile com- com- commu- communication dev- device vices. I need a mo- motion? Oh, I believe.
Webster, I motion to table?
We're gonna table this because we need to, okay. And I need a sec- second?
Eckes?
And call for the vote, please? Trustee Webster?
I.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, I.
Trustee La French?
La French, I.
Trustee Eckes?
I.
Trustee Benz? Benz, I. Mo- mo- motion pa- passes five-zero. Okay, moving on to adjournment.
Eckes?
Webster? Eighteen point zero-one, I need a mo- motion to approve? I have a first from Eckes and a second from Webster. Okay, please call for the vote? Trustee Webster?
I.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, I.
Trustee La French?
La French, I.
Trustee Eckes?
I.
Trustee Benz? Benz, I. Mo- mo- motion pa- passes five-zero. Please have a good night and a hap- happy than Thanksgiving. Madam President, the time is nine thirty-nine. And the time is now nine thirty-nine.
I knew you guys weren't staying with me till eleven. Eleven, what's this eleven stuff?
No, but if there was a debate, I wanted to leave.
Oh, no.
I was trying to be sweet.
Oh, man.